Six o'clock.
I'll be in to order. So can we do that administrative stuff first?
Sure. I'll just, this is from Karen Rossi from the Parks and Rec Commission. At the August third, twenty twenty-two recreation meeting, the Rec Commission voted to delete all existing items from the draft FPT except the tennis court refurbishment. We would like to move this out to two thousand twenty-six. And then the only other thing I had note on was the middle school ceremony.
Yeah, the middle school ceremony is the twenty.
Third.
It's a Tuesday, I think.
It's next Tuesday.
So it's eleven o'clock. So are we going or are we not going?
I'm going anyway.
You're not available to go.
You're unavailable to go.
Are you available to go on a Tuesday or what?
Um, I can try. He said whoever's appointed to go, if it's not you, would you come anyways? So. So I will be the sacrificial lamb and go and.
I'm going because I was invited by that go vote anyway. So I was planning on going by now.
They also were interested in, uh, either of you wanted to make comments at the ceremony.
If you're going, you can comment.
Or remarks, I should say.
I'll say my taxes are high, but it's a very nice building. How about that?
Okay, maybe I'll make comments.
All right, do you want to tell Denise?
Yes.
All right, so I respond to Dr. Morris, but. All right, anything else?
So.
Also, can you be on the lookout? I know they'll send it to me, but the draft proposals from towns were due last Friday for the municipal association legislative process. So at some point, they're going to send us a summary.
Yep.
Of whatever got submitted. So we need to talk about those and see if what we are positioning about those particular things.
Supposedly that's in September, isn't it?
Yeah, it's September, but.
That's coming fast. I'm there.
I don't suspect when we meet next Monday that they're going to have the summary done. So maybe it's been meeting after that, but we need to be on the lookout for it.
I'll check on the line too, just in case it pops up before they send it to us.
Okay. All right. And Mr. John, we're up to you.
Okay. Since the last time we looked at it, there have been some changes to the FPT. Um, and we're up to version zero point zero three of the planning for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and beyond. So that's since we've moved to new fiscal year, that's our version number starts over zero. Since your last SAR, it's been rolled over to the new fiscal year. So we're now in twenty twenty-three and we're planning for twenty twenty-four and beyond. The updated town buildings and town hall, highway equipment, roads and bridges, fire equipment, ponds and cisterns, and the transfer station worksheets. In meetings that I had with the public works director and the fire chief, have added an inflation worksheet. Change the function of the annual cost increase entry on each fund worksheet. We'll see this when we get to it, but um, the annual cost increase used to include all three sources of cost increase. And now it only includes real cost increase and quality cost increase. There's a separate worksheet for inflation. And.
Oh, wow.
The separate worksheet for inflation has the historical, what has the inflation been actually been since two thousand ten? Because the oldest cost estimate that we have is from two thousand ten. So to bring that to today, you need to know what has it been historically? Where is it now? And then down along here, you can put in your crystal ball guess of what's it going to look like in the future? So assuming that the federal market committee is genius, it's going to come on down and stay right at two percent.
Genius is awesome.
There are all the projections, of course, always show that for the long term. And there's always some reason words about how expecting things to behave normally.
Out of the last twenty years though, or ten years, twice that did happen.
Yeah, there's, there's.
It was everywhere twice, so good job.
And some of us that are older think that, hey, seven percent. This is New England, New England, inflation in New England, or rather northeast is lower than the average for the country. Some of us that are old say, oh, this isn't so bad because we remember back in like seventies and nineteen eighty when it was fifteen percent.
I remember a car loan, eighteen point nine percent.
Yep. House loans.
Yes, I had one.
Yeah.
Because that's what it was.
So this spreadsheet that lets you put in what your estimate is for inflation. Because previously, there was just one cost increase factor to be used for the whole twenty years. And of course, in the current environment we're in now, that's not reasonable. And if you used what's reasonable for the near term now, you would, we hope, be greatly exaggerating future prices. So that's what this spreadsheet does. And it's used as a lookup table. So you look at year twenty twenty, if that was your estimate, and you want to know five years from there, what would be the factor that you have to multiply the twenty twenty cost by to get that future cost? That's what this does. And then in each of the spreadsheets, this is no longer the total. This is a real cost increase and quality cost increase. So this one point oh three gets compounded by however many years are required. And that gets multiplied by that inflation factor. And that's what produces these numbers.
Can you go back to the other tab?
To the inflation.
Yeah, wherever you work. What's the red?
So this only, I only carried this out to twenty sixty. So of course, if you're looking at twenty fifty and you want to go fifteen years in the future, well, for twenty fifty, we don't have any numbers fifteen years in the future. So that's why these are these are termed red to show that it really isn't calculating fifteen years in the future from. And of course, from twenty sixty, it can only calculate one year in the future. Because that's the, that number that you put in is the number that you expect to use from twenty sixty, looking forward just one year.
Thank you for all of this, that's great.
And the last change is with handling of ARPA. So I know that you're particularly interested in what is going to spend on ARPA one and what things are going to be spent on ARPA two. Many of the expenditures for ARPA one were this last fiscal year. But in order to be able to see the total that's spent, I just took all of those ARPA items and made them happen on the spreadsheet in this year, twenty twenty-three. And when I did that and then met with the public works director and he added things to town buildings, we ran out of space.
Yeah, perfect.
So I realized that there are some items in ARPA that we paid for them out of ARPA, but they're not going to be recurring, not going to like the insulation. That's a one-time thing. You're not going to do it again. So I just took one of the extra fund worksheets, there's an extra and an extra two, and made it into an ARPA non-recurring where we could stick these things artificially listing as being twenty twenty-three while someone were. And that way they get counted as part of this total up here. That total which shows up on every worksheet. So things that were probably not a one-time thing, those stayed. I did color them, it's kind of reddish colored. But those stayed in town buildings or where they were. Some of these things like trails committee bridges, you know, that never did have a home here because there is no fund related to that. But if you don't have a way of counting it, then the total you see for ARPA is not correct. And talking to the department heads, two of them, question came up about, well, I thought it was a question, about how this tool should be used. It was talking to the public works director and he found an item that had a planned year for that expenditure was a year that had come from the CIP. And he said, that's, that's not what he would prefer. He wanted it to be in a different year. And I said that my opinion is, and you can change, this is my opinion, is that the department heads should enter whatever they think is the best plan to provide the services to the town. And then the select board sets funding limits and priorities. Because all of these things are things that the department heads could express as a need for a particular purpose or benefit. And then you have that responsibility of that cost benefit ratio across all the different departments in deciding what the town really can afford and what those priorities should be. I think there really should not be the department heads trying to trying to second guess what the board might want to see and change them. The department head should be able to come to you when you're starting to question and express, you know, what they think are the highest priorities, what are the lowest priorities? If they had to take something out, what would they take out and so forth? So we did, we did change some dates to what, I think it was mostly in town buildings. Might have been in highway equipment to what the, to what Steve thought it should be. And then one more thing. For future considerations, there are items that should be planned for, but they're not part of the financial planning tool. And they shouldn't be part of the CIP, although they have in the past. One of them is police equipment. Police equipment has been listed in the CIP. I have put in, did start putting in a police equipment worksheet, which you can see it's beyond N sum, so it's, it's an orphan. It doesn't get added into anything. And when I started putting this in, I realized this just takes up too much space. I need to have a different mechanism here for recurring costs. Tasers is one that has a sequence every five years, there's something. Of course, the police cruiser that doesn't end up spreading out, using up all this space going out like this. So I haven't done anything with that. The other is in the CIP, there's been a code enforcement vehicle with just listed there. And then maybe also computers, town computers. These are things that I think should not be part of the CIP, but some of them have been planned that way. They're not part of this tool. There's no funds connected, no trust or reserve funds connected with them. For the most part, I think there shouldn't be, so that's fine. But they should be planned. And that's, those are the changes and that's what I have. So. So we're up to level three. You can see what ones were updated and when they were updated. By just tonight, we heard about recreation. And so I would make that change. Was there any change in the cost, estimated cost? Is that a new cost?
Doctor figure, very simple, about saying like delete all existing items, except the tennis court refurbishment, and they'd like to use twenty twenty-six as the date, but they didn't mention any change to.
So where in their tab? So where do they actually remove it? Right in the middle.
So these have been removed previously. And then last year, they put in bleachers and playground equipment.
Bleachers, I agree, because we found that we had bleachers already.
And we had the equipment.
Oh, we have.
Yep, they have everything, so that's why they're.
This playground equipment was put in last year as, we don't know what we need, but we think we'll need money in the future, so it was just that.
Okay.
So we're going to say going to delete all these items.
Yay.
And we're going to make this twenty-six.
Can we just add some more items?
And it's still a twenty twenty, a market research from twenty twenty-two. And so I think some more research is needed on what should these real cost and quality cost increases be? But here's one where, I'm just guessing, it's zero percent. So in other words, this goes up at the same rate as inflation.
Yep. Which makes sense because it's. It's really, really high right now, but that is, has a huge flux of demand.
Yeah, the ones that I know of where there's really a significant real cost increase and quality cost increase is in the fire equipment. That's a big one. Because fire equipment has been going up. Last fire truck was a seven percent per year. When you go back and look at what was paid twenty years ago versus what was just paid recently.
I wouldn't worry too much about it, it's never either.
We always raise the.
We kind of like threw a date in there and I.
Yeah.
We joked that it was twenty twenty never.
We won't spend our time on this one.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry.
John, can you? Anything else, just because we've changed stuff, but why is it allocating a hundred and twenty-three dollars when we said that balance is five thousand? It's over five thousand, so it shouldn't be dumping any more money in there, should it? What's the? Wait, you're a little right.
Yeah, so it's a breakout, it's trying to keep a minimum of five thousand.
Yep.
Ten percent or a max of twenty.
Oh, okay, a max of twenty.
But this, this is for you to choose. And maybe the five thousand to twenty thousand made more sense when this was a long list.
Yeah, longer list.
But maybe it does make sense now, but let's change it.
We can let that.
Yeah, I just, I don't, in terms of other tabs that are doing this, all those little amounts start to add up.
Yes.
It's not that much, but you know, all of them are doing it.
So this shows for all these funds, what are, what are those limits set to? And so we have some, like library building is set zero, zero, zero. Internal service fund for crew benefits, no, lane acquisition, closest set, zero, zero. You can make this anything you want. If you bring min and max together to be the same number, then it will just, no matter what the percentage is, it will always do that number.
So we're up to what, nineteen million now? Let's, okay.
Oh, yeah. So. If you have other. If you want that something other than twenty thousand.
Well, for now, can we just set it to five thousand and then we'll be putting those little numbers in there?
And so it looks like you have to set aside some money to get to twenty twenty-six. If it's going to cost fifty-one thousand then. And then after that, you don't have to set aside any. And it ends with five thousand and it's earning interest, so that's why it goes up. That is something that, so this is where the beginning year balances are updated. So this, this is what was actually in those funds July first. This is what was planned to be deposited and it has been. And then this really is an unknown, of course. And this is one point six percent for this year and two point four for future years. I joked with a banker this week, or last week, that maybe we will get back to a normal interest rate environment and this will be a bigger number, but I haven't seen much of a normal interest rate environment.
One of my savings accounts is up to two percent already, so.
Oh, yeah, no, there's, there's, there's two and a half percent in certificates and.
Yeah, this is just a savings account. Have you already got the lane use change already?
It's. I haven't gotten the check yet. You signed for it last week.
Yep.
And the check should be next week.
Okay. All right, so one of the things that Andy you did is you gave us an update in terms of the funds that have been spent. And I don't know if you have an update, but as far as I remember, the first ARPA monies, we were like overextended by like fourteen thousand. Is that still the case or has that never changed?
It's, the number has changed and you're going to be overextended more because Joanne had not offset that forty-one thousand dollars that we use for labor costs or.
Oh, yeah.
So that is going to be offset as revenue from ARPA funding. So you're, you're going to be more. The big unknown at this point is the James Road survey costs. I believe most of that work has been done. They haven't given us any sort of receipt. I think that was estimated at twenty-one thousand dollars, which Karen thought was going to be low.
Decatur Drive came in at double what it is estimated at.
Karen and I are also in the process of looking at the planning and zoning grants that we had the meeting to discuss about today to see if any of that, that funding is available to use for the James Road survey.
James Farm Drive?
Yeah, James, I'm sorry, James Farm Drive, yeah.
So it was about fourteen with the James Farm. And so how much should we set aside in addition to the twenty thousand, seven twenty-five that we've already kind of set aside?
Yeah, I would say an additional forty-one thousand for that, the expenditures for the COVID stipends.
Plus, how much for the James Farm surveys?
That's a separate line item.
Yeah.
The.
What I'm trying to get at is, okay, did we get another check, I believe, for two hundred and thirty-nine thousand?
We did.
How much do we have to take off that? So we know how much we're supposed to be allowed to allocate. So I don't want to overextend this again because we're not getting any more money, so.
Right. No, I can get an exact number for that and it'll, let me see if I can get an exact number for what the James Road.
James Farm Road.
James Farm Road costs are going to be.
We, we do have some money that will be coming. We've passed a lot of bills recently and I know that some of the things we've been talking about with insulation, like hopefully, I don't know if we can, how that all works, but we have some other things we're going to be changing and those might have funds coming in with the, so there might, there might be some money coming in or we can rearrange how we do things.
So would it be safe to say if out of the two hundred and thirty-nine, if we knocked off fifty thousand and allocated the rest, it would be okay?
I think that would be safe to say yes.
Can we spend more later?
So that's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. So I think what I'd like to accomplish today, if you ladies are amenable, is take a look at what we've got and see what kind of gets into ARPA.
Now, I know I spoke to Steve briefly about his desire to talk to us at a point about the sand salt shed. Is that something he spoke to you about as well?
Yeah, there's a reduced pricing here for that.
But it's more of a need than we realized because of the expense upfront. So it was something that I think had been farther down the road and now it's, I think you have it there, it's twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four, but the price is down to seventy-five thousand. And he thinks that's been more.
Wasn't it like, you're saying that's what he started with?
No, if you go way back, it was three hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay, that's what.
And then it came on down, I think more recently it was one twenty-five.
Okay, and this is the new kind?
This is the new, so this is a fabric covered pipe structure. And he thinks that seventy-five thousand is more than adequate, but he couldn't sharpen the pencil yet with what he knows right now.
So that was something that has an added benefit of because you can buy the salt you need in a larger quantity. You're actually saving money. So something to think about because it is, it is on the list, it has been asked for many times and it could save us money.
So can we go through each one of these tabs and see what's on tap in the near future and try and make a list? So I think the last time we used the chalkboard, if our variable scribe is available or if it's like.
Well, he can do it. He can do it now on here.
I can do it now here. Some of these, like town hall, furnace for town hall, which was to come from ARPA one, that hasn't been purchased yet, right?
No.
But it's still in the total?
Isn't it in that total there?
So it's still being counted in this total.
So could we put a star by the things that we don't have to worry about today?
So if you still want to buy this with ARPA money, then you change it to ARPA two, don't you?
I would think so. But then that, well, we have to add money back into ARPA two, not take it out of ARPA one. Or are you saying it wasn't enough money for it?
Of what I know right now, and this can be collected. Forty-one thousand.
It was listed as project, what I completely, but I don't believe it was expended. We did those.
So it'll come out of one eight and a.
Library one.
So that becomes ARPA two. And do we still, we still need it for instance, I'm assuming? But have we talked about higher, what is the word I'm looking for?
Efficiency or?
Yeah, the new units that they use all over those.
Heat rods?
Displays.
Heat pumps, yeah. So is that going to be the same price as I'm looking into? And that might come out of the new funding for the IRA?
Possibly, I don't know for sure. You also have to, you have to look at each building specifically with regard to the heat pump. Some buildings are efficient enough for a region five heating zone like we're in for heat pump work.
Others are so leaky that.
Yeah, and one of the places you run into trouble is with insurance companies too. So you can find yourself not able to get coverage for a building that is just heat pumped.
That depends on the source, right? It's her air source.
They've just come so far in the past two, two years, it's insane how much more efficient it is.
Well, I think until we figure out what we're doing with that particular structure, I don't think it should be on our like active, active list. Because what we've said is if that furnace does, the library is out of there, so.
So do we take it off right now and make that something that maybe that's something we look for funding?
Well, I think, I think I would prefer if we put it on like the secondary list.
Okay.
Because I think what we're looking for, prime movers, shakers that are ready to be done in the next, you know, matter of months.
So can that be a list for John's E's A three? It's not actually, it doesn't exist, but it's like a thing where we know to look back and.
People have to change his code, so A three is now available to points?
I'm just, I'm trying to think what's easier for you, John.
These are the codes.
All right, no, it's a code. Okay, AX, can you do AX or just X?
Exodus means it's not funded.
Got it.
I can keep a list too, that helps.
And by not funded means, someplace I wrote that up as either not funded or no funding claim.
Got it, okay. So what would you suggest?
We haven't identified. So it still shows up here, you just have not identified the funding source. And that means it's not going to come from the fund, so it's not going to head to the numbers up here. And it's not going to come out of ARPA one, ARPA two, so it doesn't add to these numbers here. Your other choices are just say that it's coming out of the budget.
Okay.
Because this budget number really doesn't tie into the budget.
Okay, so maybe AB?
So it.
For now?
Or can you just get Rebecca to just write them down?
Great.
So let's make it not funded, so it's not being calculated in anything. And then we can go back and change it if we change our minds.
So the ARPA total should fall, come down.
Okay. So what else is on?
So this, the highway annex was done. This replace highway department equipment shed was not done. Steve had had some talk about there's a cemetery shed. So maybe the cemetery gets a new shed and the existing cemetery shed moves to the highway department.
Does the cemetery have the funding for that or would that need to come from ARPA?
I think that's in here someplace.
Cemetery shed.
Sanctuary shed, expand or replace. And right now it's to come out of the fund.
So should we make that A two and then make the other one F? Or it's zero because we're just in transputs.
Again, oh, funded.
F comes out of the fund, so it adds to these, it's something you save for and you take it out of the fund.
So, okay.
Cemetery shed could be two.
Yeah, A two and then make the highway shed coming from the cemetery.
Well.
Yes.
If you would need it because you're just moving the cemetery shed, so it's zero.
So.
So the dollars, the no dollars.
Yeah, so we, well, I don't want.
We're not funded. We're not funded.
Place it, but I don't want to lose it here.
Can we make it X not funded and then we'll deal with it later?
Yes, I lost it.
It's a Lamar.
Yep, there it is. Twenty-three, line twenty-three, line twenty-three. Number eleven, line twenty-three.
It's in red, it's in red.
Colorblind.
So.
Let's make it.
It would, it would end up having a zero cost.
Yep.
Right.
And make its code what?
You can make it A two. You can make it A two at that point if you're just switching it so we remember what's happening.
Well, once that cost goes to zero, because you know, the plan is you're just going to get it from someplace else.
Right.
So it doesn't matter what their code is.
Okay, great.
And this would add. From the cemetery.
So we have to figure out what the really important must-dos are.
So the red ones, the ones we've already done?
Red ones were just ARPA where I artificially moved the date to twenty-twenty.
Okay, alright.
Some of them were, all of them had previously been listed as twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
Some of them were actually accomplished in twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. Can we scroll down? What else is relatively pointed out? What about the, well, uh, line twenty-three, number thirty-one?
Yes. So Steve was thinking that, where that had previously, we'd talked about that coming from ARPA one. And it does not fit within the dollars that are there, suggested ARPA two.
Okay, and that's part of the forty thousand that's on ARPA two, correct?
Yes. Well, it's now sixty-eight thousand.
Oh, I'm looking the wrong line, sorry.
ARPA two, sixty-eight is the total. Forty is what's from town buildings.
Okay.
From this sheet and then from all the funds, sixty-eight.
Sorry, wrong, wrong line.
Gym was done. Library heat exchanger was done. Oh, and then at the bottom here were the things to be added. And notice up here says some error. This number right here doesn't equal this number. And that means that we've got a mistake in here and the mistake is the transfer station electrical upgrade has no source listed. The front of course director said he knows it's ongoing, but he doesn't know where the funding's coming from.
Do we decide on the funding's coming from there?
We have not and we don't have, Steve and I actually both spoke with Chris from PES today and we don't have a hard and fast estimate of the final quote that he's going to give us. We do have some rather disturbing news about the upgrade equipment that we need that is probably about a year out on back order.
Sorry, I was so afraid it would take too long, yeah.
To upgrade to four-eighty. So we're, we're, there's a potential of can you move forward with your vision without the upgrade?
Is that safe to say?
Yeah, and still be able to do the upgrade later when the equipment's available.
So, so this is something that you don't know where it's coming from, then it probably should be listed as an X.
Or F, or yeah, it has to come from somewhere.
It has to come from somewhere.
So F, F for now.
And, and it's, it's coming real soon now.
But we still don't know how much it is?
Correct. The twenty thousand is a plain guess.
Yeah.
So it should be a what? An X or it has to be done, but we don't know from where.
Or do we just say it's from A two because we know it has to be done this year and we have to find the money somehow? At least we are counting for it.
If this stuff's backordered for a year, now we're into fiscal two thousand twenty-four.
Fiscal, right, but would we, would we have it by the time that, before our next was done?
Um, he had an estimate of fifty-six weeks for his supplier, but he had found two other, it's basically a socket that connects at the four-eighty level. He found two others which were expensive but available now and just losing what else he can find.
Traveling the country, looking at colleges, seeing, I don't know if I can pick any. Third in the trunk, whatever that is. Great, okay, so maybe A two, just so we have an ARPA. Cause we know we need it.
Okay, now the sums checked, which means everything is assigned to a legitimate source.
Alright, can we peruse the other tabs? Any sequential limit?
Sure, I don't know if you want to look at what things got added here.
No, they're all assigned to A two, so sums make sense. Getting forty-two and forty-three, so.
Yeah, great.
Highway equipment. Let's see, changes here. So the roll-off truck, of course, we just purchased it. And I asked Steve, so how long is it going to last? And he said when he did the analysis, it was based on it lasting twenty years. So it's in here as a new purchase in twenty-forty-two. And right now it's in with the same kind of split that it had before where ten percent of it is paid for by highway. He said that that is actually right now the most used truck they have.
Oh, that's great news. That's a good choice.
It is used a lot.
That's great. It's saving us money.
So what does he use it for in the highway department?
Everything.
Um, I actually started using it for transporting a small excavator.
Yeah.
It was over at the highway department and they came in with that truck with an open top container on the back of it. And you could see the arm and the top of the cab of a little excavator.
It's great because we've been able to move a lot of things that we can't normally do at a huge cost reduction.
We filled it with furniture from the old school.
Or we could have done that, yeah. We've been picking up large amounts of things for.
Surprised the people at the school and slammed the container down in front of the door.
So he says they're using it a lot.
Great.
So it looks like like all these things, we've planned to fund it out of the fund. So is there anything in there that's not funded? Oh, we've got one.
Down partner.
So the GPS system is twenty-five-five. He requested that come out of A two. And then there's an annual expense for that of seventy-five-hundred dollars a year. So that would come out of the annual budget. And there's also the GPS receiver, which is a piece of equipment he thought would come out of the fund.
And that's not just for GPS, it's for a lot of things. That helps us with the snow and recording things and it's like a lot of reasons we need that, right? Like how much, how much we're using of salts and sand? Is that the one he's talking about?
No, there's another one here. There's ground speed controls. Is that what you're thinking of?
Yeah, that would be the salt.
Where they can control the amount of salt and sand that you're putting out based on the vehicle speed. So you don't, when the vehicle slows down or stops, you don't get those piles.
Yeah, there's one that like keeps, is that the one that keeps track of how much you have used of all those things? Cause one of them helps him make decisions in the future, right?
This one is to locate all the stuff in town.
Right.
So where are all underground pipes? Where are the culverts? Where are? And you go and find all those things, put it into your GIS system. And now he can send an employee out to check culverts and that employee doesn't have to have the experience that some of our people right now have where they know by heart where everyone's located.
Great.
And, and it could be other things.
So he's asking for that to come out of that one-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand we have right now?
He was asking for that to come out of A two. The other changes, motor grader. This is a new item. The town has had a grader for a long time. When Randy was leaving, Randy had said he was the only one that drove it. Knew how to operate it, so he thought the town probably wasn't going to replace it. Now we have two employees that know how to operate it and use it. Steve and, isn't he Ben?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I think Ben had experience with that. Steve.
I would guarantee, yeah.
Yeah. So he's put in for a, a use, a good quality used one.
Okay, but that's in twenty-thirty-eight?
Yeah, that's, that's a ways down the road.
Okay.
He says the, the one we have will last quite a while because it's not used during the winter for plowing roads. So it's not exposed to salt. A new one is like a quarter million dollars. And then another change was.
Excavator? I don't remember that, but. What are you looking for? Is that really closer to the top? Yeah, I don't remember. Line number seventeen, number five.
Used excavator back, but that has been used for a while.
I just don't remember it, but.
I do.
Oh, I'm in the wrong, in the line. I think it's such a transfer station. There was a, a fly or he's going to change the type of fly.
Is there a, this one? No, you can go to the next one.
So there's some bridges. Mary talked about the surveys. And the other things were some schedule changes pushing some things out a little bit. And these last two items are new. So Old Mill Road Bridge, the header is the that, the embankment reinforcement on each side of the bridge. And apparently only one side was done in the past. It was done by the state. But then they couldn't get the state to come back to the other side. So one side is, is a new reinforced concrete header and the other side is old stone which needs repair. So, and knew of a grant that he could get for seventy-nine thousand dollars, which needed to be used for bridge work. His guess was that it was a hundred thousand dollar cost. So that's why it's divided into two, seventy-nine thousand to come from the grant, twenty-one thousand to come from the fund.
So why would that be annual budget if it's eighty thousand and we're not paying?
Well, if you get a grant.
You have to pay for it in the.
And a grant goes into general fund.
Yep.
And then you've got to stick it in.
Yeah.
It's a way of saying, I mean, maybe you want, we need another code here, but it's a way of saying it's not coming out of the reserve fund. It's not coming out of ARPA. It's coming from this grant.
We have to have, hold place for the money, but we don't have to actually come up with it. So there should be like a, something. We can deal with that later. It's just, it's eighty thousand. We don't have to actually.
We should see an additional thirty-six thousand in the next couple of weeks for bridge work too. It's coming from that unanticipated highway block. We've got our ninety-five.
That's what happened.
Thirty-six hasn't showed up yet, but the thirty-six can be spent this year. Moving forward, they did a special.
And it can go towards your twenty percent, right? Isn't that to be?
Yeah, I believe so.
So couldn't we do this now?
As soon as we actually have the check in hand.
Yeah, so that might be something we just, we don't have to worry about, cause it's done.
So if this repair is done, then the Old Mill Bridge replacement got pushed out to twenty-forty-two.
Great.
There is a financial analysis that should be done to say, is it worth spending this amount of money to push this out to twenty-forty-two? Or if you could do the whole bridge replacement now and the town cost was three-hundred thousand, then instead of it being good to twenty-forty-two, if you completely refill the bridge, it would be good for what? Fifty to?
Could Stratford Regional help us with that or who would help us with that?
Time.
Could we ask them? They can help us with it.
One of the questions may be, and maybe that it's just not possible to get the state involved in the.
Backflow.
Yeah, so that may, that may be the reason why.
What's, what's the state of the bridge other than that header?
I've got a bridge status report for everything in town, with the state that I can check that out.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I understand that it's, that this would fix it up.
Right.
Well.
Well, and if, if we use the money that we were getting, it would have to come out of the fund.
All of that would be paid for.
Twenty-four slash twelve, the.
That would take a hundred off of our sheet.
Correct, if you have the additional.
Twenty-one.
Well, no, because A two is showing up.
Take out this.
Yeah, but it's not included in the total, right?
It's AB.
AB is in the budget, so it doesn't, it's listed up here.
Right.
But this really isn't tied into your budget. This isn't, you know, we don't have a mechanism that from the FPT sticks it into the budget line.
Great.
But we should probably print all the things that we were hoping would come out of the annual budget.
Yeah, so we're back towards the budget.
Right.
One of the things, cause I, I can add as many codes as you want. It becomes a, a problem of, okay, how do we display the results?
Yeah, that's fine. I get it. Now, I understand what you're meaning. I didn't understand. Thank you.
So, so what you're saying is that the second one could also, cause it used that thirty-six and it doesn't have to come out of the fund.
Right. And that would change your fund numbers, which is what I actually am more interested in.
Yep, so the ninety-one thousand.
And.
If we choose that.
Yeah. The Decatur Drive, did you see that came back at, at fourteen, right?
Twelve.
No, this is the.
It was six.
Oh, okay.
It's estimated to be like six, seven hundred and it's.
Got it.
That is always the double.
Yeah, but six, six fifteen.
Did they explain why it was double?
I was gonna say.
I think that's a really not good estimate. And if we're going to do it again, don't we want to make sure we have a little more rating in of that spending? No?
Discussion we should probably have with planning and zoning.
Could we ask planning and zoning to look at that before we spend this twenty thousand that we thought was?
I believe most of the work for James Farm Road has been done. They just haven't built us yet.
Alright, well, then in the future we'll know to ask for it.
So this Decatur Drive that's planted in the zoning, not skiing?
Alright. Combination of.
Can we ask whoever was responsible why it was double of what it was? Thank you.
Why is the estimate so terrible? If we're looking at James Farm, why is that one looking worse too?
So that in the future we can do a better job of knowing what we're spending.
Well, I don't mind something coming in a little bit more because things happen, but double, there's something wrong.
If you build a house and it comes out double, you're going to be happy.
Yeah. This missed capture, your house is worth it. Oh, no, no, it's eight-hundred thousand. Can they break that down a little different? Alright, next. Fire department, if we got nothing else.
So.
Radio.
Fire equipment. There was a change here, radio infrastructure. This is a actual quote for Lee's fraction.
Where was it going? Or where is the quote putting it?
I mean, physically, where's?
Yeah, physically, where is it going to be located?
Over on the other side of, by that train track. I'm sorry, we're not talking about this. The other side.
Other side of Lee. How many sides of Lee are there?
It's like fifty shakes of bay or something, yeah? No, it's nothing like that at all in any way.
So there's the quote, which is divide split between three towns to understand it.
Okay.
And then. And then the pieces that are for Lee were these three items for that total. This is the, so I need to state this picture. This is the signal strength, so giving you what the coverage is from the new tower. So it must be going right there.
So it's really right by the race track.
So is it where the tower is, the cell tower is now, or is it at the race track? My question is, you know, this is equipment to go, but you have to put it someplace.
Right.
Do we have to pay for land?
Yeah, that's the thing. Do we have to pay for something for rental and... So what does it say? What, ram still? Road, dispatch keys, oh, oh. Well, it was small, but now it's wicked small.
Yeah.
Can you make it wicked big again?
Wicked small. Are you, you're in a lead of him or anything?
It's wicked. My little nephew, that's his word, wicked. That's wicked. Christiansen. That's Durham.
So, this is the first piece.
First piece is Barrington, isn't it?
Okay. Next piece, it's on page two where...
Durham.
There's a light tower, so this is the...
Where is the light tower?
That's the first piece. And then there's also...
It just floats.
Tener brackets. Assume the equipment is going inside existing shelter.
So where is it now? There's more of it.
I mean, from that, from that map, it looks like it's, I think there's a radio tower on the other side of one...
Yep. There's a cell tower from the race track.
All right, let's stop wasting any more time with that.
Could we, could you check with the chief handy and just see where is this? Is there going to be a rental fee for having our equipment there? What's the scoop about?
It's already existing.
So usually if somebody else owns the site, you want to put your equipment there, but it's usually a rental tower. So that's an operating expense, so yeah, it might be sixty, seven thousand for the equipment, but what's the annual cost going to be?
Are we currently paying for the equipment in there?
No, we don't have any equipment there, as far as I know. It's just a cell carrier.
Okay.
So, you know, there, there's nothing here that's some recurrent cost. This is just set up.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
We know how cell towers and cell phones work. They'll have a real big recurring cost, right, after you sign up.
Thank you. Anything else in there?
Yeah.
Radio upgrade.
I guess the other thing is, because I just bought engine one. So engine one is in here again for twenty years from the year you bought it. Two point two million.
Yeah, there.
Can we buy a whole bunch of buckets and, you know, water and then have a whole bunch of people run around?
Can everyone just have like a lot of, for two point two million dollars, how many of those little things can you buy free, Tim?
What, what little things?
Reflector fires. Everyone says like, I really like toning. Two point two million, that's a lot. You could all have...
Well, because, I mean, two point two million dollars, that far in the future is not worth two point two million today.
Right now, the technology is increasing dramatically and I see why an engine is costing so much more than it did in the past. I totally get that. There has to be an end to that monumental growth. Like, how much more can you do to a fire engine?
How much is the low for bread today? Three, four bucks?
Take a look at some of the fire...
Twenty, thirty, forty years ago, it was like a quarter.
This interest is so much more than anything else, though.
I think some of the fire engines I've seen in Europe, pictures of them from Europe, look like they're more sophisticated than ours.
Right, but at some point...
At some point, I'm guessing robotics is going to come into it.
Oh, cool. Well, that'll decrease your staff salary, so.
Maybe.
Right, it's robotics. Is that bad? Is that a fact?
But who does control the robots and maintain that?
I'm just saying.
There's always a cost.
You probably need firefighters with PhDs to...
Yeah, yeah. All right. Anything else in here? Looks like the fund is covering most of the stuff anyways.
Yeah, but looking...
Yeah, this is all from the fund. And I believe this one, radio upgrade, was the only thing out of ARPA one. And I think that was already done.
Yes, radio upgrade was done and we got some medical equipment too, with a separate go for amount of money from the state, about fifty thousand dollars.
It says here, fire department radio upgrade is project completed, yes. The total expenditure was thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Yes.
So what is...
So it said it was completed, but that was the thirty-seven hundred?
Yeah, thirty-seven oh seven.
Was just the first bill.
Oh, well, then why is it saying that it's completed then?
Because it's completed, but the bill, second bill hadn't been paid.
That, I'm not sure. Joanne didn't really believe that, so...
This is, this is not good, because if I see yes, it's completed, I'm assuming that's the final number. If it's not, then it shouldn't say it's completed.
Yeah, and that had been given to me as the final number on that.
I, if I'm remembering correctly, Scott said that the bill went to Joanne, I think it was on the twenty-second, and that was printed on the twentieth.
Oh, so they didn't know that there was a second bill?
So...
All right, that's not very nice. So, okay.
I will verify the status of the billing of the...
It's hard to make decisions when you don't have good numbers, so...
And he said that it is now, that it is completed, it was, it was actually completed at the time that that was written.
So is the ten thousand eight fifty-seven actually the final number, or that is the final?
That's the thirty-seven hundred plus additional number he had, which added up to this number.
Yeah, I get a little fuzzy here.
What's that a crowd?
It did as the thirty-seven oh seven plus.
Seventy-one fifty.
Yes.
All right.
That's like you go and have your car repaired and they say, oh, it's two hundred dollars. And then you go and check out and they say, oh, no, it's not two hundred dollars, it's three thousand dollars. Because, oh, I forgot to add in the extra stuff. It's like, that's not something you want to hear.
The only pages we need to look at are highway equipment and town buildings, right?
The only what?
The only, only things we have to decide between tonight, what we're spending ARPA money on, are those two pages.
Maybe transfer stations.
You have to look at some of the other ones.
Well, I think some of them are going to be easy cells.
Got it, sorry. I thought we didn't see that.
I, I think what happened here, it sounds to me like we don't have a mechanism where Joanne gets some information about how many bills are coming in.
Right.
That, yes, the project is completed, but that, unless the fire chief, when he's saying the project is completed, also knows for sure what invoices have been received.
Right.
Who doesn't know the value received?
Yeah, and this confuses me, because this was, to my mind, was completed a long time ago. This was not something...
And why is it still coming in?
So I have no idea why the bill would be coming in at the end of August, supposed to.
Let's untangle that.
It was actually done.
To both, both of these department heads, I said, my function here is data entry clicks.
All right, great.
And you're absolutely right. Department heads are coming to Joanne with handfuls of paper as...
For all these different things. She's out there, what goes where?
If that's the mechanism, and he's handed her the paper, as far as he knows, it's been received.
Yep.
That doesn't mean she's had time to go through that stack of paper.
All right.
Ponds and cisterns quickly.
Ponds and cisterns.
All funded.
And everything comes out of the fund. And I asked about this cistern repair. They're still working on it. The fifty thousand dollars is the upper cost. They think that it can be done much lower cost locally, but they haven't cut that nail down yet.
Well, I don't know if we want to do that. That's up here in a nice part of town. We might not want to.
Thanks.
Just kidding.
It's much nicer than it was a few years ago, I'll tell you that much.
Well, you get rid of all the bad people.
All right, so transfer stations.
Transfer station.
Transfer station. So transfer station. We moved some of these open top containers around. This eleven yard one is the new one. It replaces a small container that's on a trailer. And the trailer is getting to what he considers dangerous, scary to drive, so... And the open top containers had been done in intervals, planned to be replaced in intervals. And Steve asked me, well, what about the shipping cost on them? Costs two thousand dollars to ship them.
Oh.
And I said, that, that's part of the acquisition cost. It's a capital expense, because having an open top container in New Jersey doesn't do the town of Lee any good.
Yep.
And he said, well, for the open top containers, they can stack them. They can ship more than one on a truck.
Wouldn't be cheaper to get a few at once?
So we moved some dates around.
Great.
To bunch all of them up.
Nicely done.
So like this one says, it includes one thousand out of the two thousand dollar cost, because we, we bunched it with another one.
Great.
Right here, one thousand out of the two thousand.
Yep.
Down here, there's three of them that we moved to the same date.
Great.
And we made a guess that if we were shipping three of them, they might charge a little bit more than just shipping one. So we said, ah, nice even number, eight, three times eight hundred is twenty-four hundred, if they charge extra because it weighs more. But that brings it from two thousand dollars per container down to eight hundred.
That's really smart. Thank you. So there's nothing here for the ARPA's?
Correct.
That we're hoping for?
There's open top container way out here in twenty thirty-three. It didn't seem to make sense, at least right now.
Right.
What he knows of condition to bring that back to an earlier time, so right now that's still a two thousand dollar shipment.
I'm sure at that point, they'll have figured it out, probably.
The closed containers, of course, can't be stacked one inside the other.
Right. Can it be closed inside of it open?
Where do we get extra? Because this year's deposit was seventy-eight, now it goes up to ninety-one?
Right.
What is...
So what had it?
Yeah, what is...
Saving for the expensive things that...
The, this is small, but previously the cost of these containers didn't include the shipping. It does now. This is, again, is small. This eleven, eleven yard open top is a new item.
And is the twenty twenty-three planned deposit that's going, like, already decided, right?
Yes.
So then the other ones have to even out for the requirements?
This is the one that's already made. And, I mean, it's already in the bank now, in the deposit.
But you just added the new truck at the bottom, so...
This one is an increase. This cage plow system for loader is previously was a, a much smaller and less expensive plow to go onto a skid steer. And now this is a bigger one that goes onto a loader. And I think that price is like doubled. But it's somehow more adaptable. And if you want to know more, I guess you'd have to ask Steve.
Twenty thirty-two, we'll, we're going to have questions on that.
Way out.
I think it was mostly just the add-on of the roll-up truck, right?
Where is, where is, can we go back to highway department? When's the loader going to be replaced? It's assuming the current one will go to the transfer station. Where's the loader?
Twenty-eight, twenty, and then line eight.
So twenty twenty-five, all right. All right, thank you.
So where are our focuses then? We've done all the options, right?
Do you have some other ones?
Is there anything under library?
I, I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay, great.
I did go to their meeting last week and there was no, they talked to the architect. And there was no discussion of what should be in here.
One of the things that we talked about is the possibility of insulation, and that wasn't in their funding, and they were hoping we could talk about that with our...
So...
That's in town buildings, isn't it?
Oh, was it? Okay.
I don't think so.
So at their meeting, the architect and the, there were three, three people there from an architectural firm. And also one person from the engineering firm, Milestone. And they now say that insulation, they found that insulation is in the budget.
Oh, okay. How weird.
Definitely.
And it's not what they had originally planned way back, which is they were going to take off all the sheet rock. And three inches of foam in the walls. This is now trying to weave the sheet rock on and eject the foam into the walls. And they didn't have a price. And they weren't sure of the details of that being done from the inside, but they're working on it.
Okay.
But doesn't Steve have to take off the exterior clavels?
So we could do that then.
This is the problem with it not being coordinated. Maybe I, so, I think that's something we should check with Steve.
We can talk about it later, but we don't have to hold place for it right now in our budget.
But I think in town buildings, there was...
In town buildings, there are items here.
Yeah.
If I could look at buildings.
AC replacement or something in there for the library?
The Lee Public Library has three items for a total of forty-four thousand, perhaps listed under town buildings.
Steve would like to do that via, I know the library units are pre-built.
It makes sense to do it all at the same time.
Right.
So it's very frustrating, because under, what, line forty-seven, number thirty-five?
Yeah.
That's one alone. And where's the other?
Oh, yeah, he exchanged.
So this is, this is one where I don't know why this is listed here.
Okay.
They talked about the air conditioning. They know it's very old. They would like to have the town replace it.
But are they putting in those...
And yet, the plan had been putting in these splits that were distributed throughout the building.
Did they not know that that's also AC?
They did, but they had a little discussion about whether a central air conditioning system was better than mini splits. And they think that they have a central air conditioning system now, because they, what they have now is the external air conditioner.
Okay.
Which is ducted from the outdoors.
That's what the mini splits will do.
It's not free on from the outdoors. It's, you know, a big duct from the outdoors. I didn't say anything.
This is a place where we need to get some facts and information, because we can't. It'd be nice if we'll take that off, but until we understand what's going on.
The problem is, there is nobody representing the town that has any understanding of what's being purchased. And so all the discussion was about colors and textures.
So that's two items. Where's the third one for the library?
What are we painting outside?
So that should be done like after they do all their stuff on the outside?
So we should change that date to like twenty-four, twenty-five? Twenty-four, maybe? If they do it all next year, we'll be able to do it twenty-five.
So the, their expectation is that this construction goes on at this coming point?
Oh, okay, so it would be twenty-three then?
Well, Steve, he's, Steve does, he wants to do the outside when?
That, I'm not sure. Let Steve box this.
Well, Steve thinks needs to be done before it's repainted, so... So maybe the plan is...
Let's just leave it twenty-three for now, and then we'll figure out the deal.
Twenty-four, yeah?
It was twenty-three, and then we changed twenty-four. Yeah, let's just leave it at that for now, and then we can come back. But we're not going to be taking that out of ARPA right now, because we don't have, that's not a definite enough thing.
Yeah.
We'll just figure out the money for that.
Okay, what about the salt?
I feel like the salt plan should, it's really the thing that is going to be long-term smart.
Because we've got much, eighty-eight. So if you did, funded that in two thousand twenty-three from eighty, or eighty-two.
Right. And then we could use, wait for all the other numbers to come in, everything else to be finalized, and we might have ten, fifteen thousand. And I think at that point, we can go through and decide what's come up that we need.
So can you change that to eighty-two?
Yep.
And change the salt change to two thousand twenty-three?
And then we're good.
So that gives us one sixty-seven. So, yeah.
So we're really going to have to change the money from the IRA bill to...
Yep.
Pay for as much insulation, as much change, as much upgrading and... Oh, you want to ask the board about if we should apply at least for a possible demolition? Oh, you want to ask the board about if we should apply at least for a possible demolition?
Yeah, I can bring that up, if you want. I had mentioned to the board that part of this four-phase, $100 million for development in New Hampshire included a little talked-about demolition clause. Um, they'll give you up to $500,000 per building for removal of a building. There are no real strings attached to that. And I have no idea what the town and the Heritage Commission are going to do with the parish house. But, uh, the, the cutoff for expenditure of that, up to $500,000 if you're, if you get the grant, is, uh, December 31st of 2024. So you can hang on to the grant for that long to see if you need it, I guess. And, and my thought was, if there is some possibility that the Heritage Commission may say the building i- is too expensive to be preserved and the town wants to do away with it, that it would be a bad idea to have a few hundred thousand dollars. Start pile free and clear for removing it.
That would be the backup option, and I think it would also be smart to do for the tool shed, just as an option, in case something happens. And we decide to, we have that funding, you know, but that's not one where it's expensive to do that. And then you can just choose not to do it, that's fine. But at least if we apply, the application's in, we have a funding.
Well, it also, um, it includes mitigation for hazardous or toxic substances can be included in that.
Which is so expensive.
I, I don't know exactly what's in the parish house, but it's of the age where, well, that's some expensive stuff.
Because we did, uh, hazardous materials assessment, it should be in your stuff there somewhere. There's two places, the stuff over the front porch and on the chimney.
Sealant.
So we wouldn't have to worry, we have the funding for all of that.
Well, the thing is, you have to do the assessment to do the, even the demolition.
Right.
To identify.
Right.
So the company that takes it down understands what it's getting into. Which is, oh, oh my god, radiation from a nuclear weapon that was stored in the basement? No, 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 we're not doing that.
So, we should just have, we should apply.
Well, I can get the paperwork and, and bring it to the board for your consideration.
Is it half a million dollars per instance, or half a million dollars for the, that's the whole fund?
Per location.
So how much money do they have?
They have, well, the total package is 100 billion. And they have, a, a good chunk of that is allocated for demolition. And the initial thought was that they would predicate it on whatever you demolished had to be replaced with, um, rentable housing. But they did away with that clause, and as long as it improves your community. And some of the ideas that they gave for improving were if you create green space, if you create lawn, if you create a parking lot. These are all identified, um-
Improving quality of the community by removing an old abandoned building, and you're now making usable, like, parking space or something?
And taxes are paid, please.
Do you want old abandoned-
And people are going hungry in this, in this thing, so, okay. Sorry.
We'd think that we should apply.
I'll, I'll put together the paperwork package, you can take a look at it. And determine whether it's something you wanna do or not, but it occurred to me that, um, that we had a housing meeting, we met with two representatives from, uh, the BEA today, who were-
Who's the BEA?
The New Hampshire State Business Enterprise, not Association, but whatever, state government. They have this money, they are anxious to start distributing it. The first part of it, it's actually aimed at developers and communities who wanna work together building rental properties, just not impossible to use. Uh, they released the applications on August 5th, they're due September 3rd. If you don't have a multifamily project, all planned, ready, just sitting waiting to know there's no possible way you can use the schedule. So, they were trying to get us to focus on, uh, some of the lesser-known aspects of this. And they said the money is going to roll fairly easily, and it's just that you have until the end of the year in 2024.
Those are no brainers to do, just have that backup.
I like the first reason, but doesn't sound like they're making it plausible for anybody to use it, so...
I think they're gonna do a second rollout.
Okay.
And they estimated today that there may be a third phase too, as they figure out how to make this work. Because they don't wanna send the money back, and...
Yeah, no, they'll figure it out.
I've already paid for it, so I don't even want to discuss it.
Karen and I are also trying to figure out if there's any way we could apply some of the planning and zoning planning money that is in the third, section of the grant towards, um, Decado and James.
Oh, that'd be great.
Discussion we had after the meeting today. I'm not sure if we can, but if we can, we certainly wanna kind of do that.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
Is there any money for building a new town hall?
There is not, unless we put at least three residential units in it.
Anything for Connor? Did you need listening there?
I have. Connor has been moving, and I have not met with him to discuss, um, how we're getting the money. I also have not discussed their special time meeting with him. Connor is under-
Did that happen already?
Uh, no, it happens on the 20th.
Okay, next Saturday.
And the other parties have been advised that the town can't vote to fire the town administrator, that it's up to the board to select them.
Oh.
They're nonetheless going ahead with the special time meeting.
Wow. That sounds like a story.
Right.
We'll ask Connor.
So we're up 163, and we're looking at one, like, 189 or so, with the 50,000 taken off, so...
I agree, though, like, perhaps waiting. Making sure all these bills are in. They're better at it.
Well, I'm not getting the one that causes on this.
No, I understand.
Well, the radio upgrade in particular, um, we need to nail down.
It feels like sufficient amount to extend to that.
Okay. So, any of these particular projects that we just identified, can we get them moving? I know Steve's got a lot of stuff on his plate, but are all under his?
Yeah, we could just get the salt shed ready for the season, right?
I don't know what the, what the turnaround time will be on it, until I talk with Steve.
And also the cemetery thing, he can-
Yep.
Get that done?
Yeah. Now, is he gonna build a cemetery shed for the 5,000, or is that something he's buying?
Yeah, the primary, uh, function of the cemetery shed, as I understand it, is it, it's an awkward, uh, storage situation because it's primarily sheets of plywood that they use on a wall.
But it's not building a field.
Right.
So, but can we find out, is he buying it or building on site? Because I think that one, they built on site.
I just think there's an solace in my place. It's a part of the problem.
Hopefully, they get that fixed, so... But I don't know if he can buy one with the features and the placement of the doors and stuff that he wants, or is he gonna be building that? The other thing I wanted to explore, I had a conversation with Candace Pratt. And, um, she was asking a question about the museum.
Okay, sorry, can I, who's Candace Pratt?
Photographer in town.
She's a person in town, she's attended our meeting, she sits in the back.
Okay.
Old lady. But she is one of the movers and the shakers of the, um, Rotary Club in Durham. And she was asking about the museum, and because of, you know, they're all in the antics and blah, 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 so we talked about that. So she stopped by and she liked the front of it, but she says, you're doing something with the sign. I said, yeah, that's the part that they need to get to it. She says, you know, the Rotary is looking for things to do.
Ooh.
So, she said, the Rotary provides the labor, you provide the materials. And I said, I believe the materials are already purchased that are on site. And she says, well, let me have a conversation with Steve and see if he'd be amenable to having it, because the people that do this on the Rotary, uh, one of whom's a builder and the other one's an engineer. They're the ones that actually come, so they have experience doing this stuff. So, um, that might be a way to free up that particular project from Steve and his people.
Great.
Everything is on site.
That's excellent.
So, could you, I guess this is the thing for Andy, I'm sorry?
What project is this?
The, um, the ramp at the museum. So, can you check with Steve and see if that's something that he might be amenable to have them doing?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Because if he's already got the plan and stuff, and the materials are on site.
Yeah. Just needs someone to do it, that's what the whole thing is, not to do.
Well, we have to check insurance and stuff like that, but...
They have to be insured, they're Rotary, right?
Well, it's always good to check and make sure.
And if Steve doesn't wanna take it up, Warren and Pete may want to. That's not a one-day thing that needs to do footings.
Well, they, they would have to have the conversation with Steve to understand what it is, but-
And he could- The ramp ends up being quite a bit longer.
Yep, well, I think if you put those two entities together, if they come to some understanding, because the Rotary is looking for things to do.
That's great.
They're actually looking for things to do, so...
We literally could use that.
So if you can check with Steve and see if, I'm pretty sure she's already contacted him, or is ready to contact him, but...
That's great.
These, these items down here, the last, um, is this six items, are added. So the salt shed that he's planning, um, that's a fabric cover.
Yep.
So that fabric cover has to be replaced periodically.
Okay.
Um, he was not sure how long it lasted. He thought it was 10 to 15 years. 15 years sounds like what I've seen from, from catalogs I've looked at, but, um, this is put in at
That sounds good, ten, say, ten years. Ready.
Um, and he has, he has no idea what the price is. But that sounds kinda reasonable.
Yeah.
This fabric is a lot more expensive than, than greenhouse plastic. These other things are all also new. For the, um, occupancy sensors for the public safety complex. That, again, is a guess. But he says, oh, times of day and night, you find lights left on.
Like a huge surprise.
Places in the building.
Yep.
Um, this next item was, uh, $8,000, an educated guess. This was for energy upgrades distributed around multiple town buildings. Uh, they were things like, um, weather stripping and leaky windows and leaky doors and so forth. We mentioned the transfer station electrical upgrade. And then the fire department entrance. I told my wife I thought the architect should be invited to the building on a very rainy day.
Yeah.
And should find the door locked.
I agree. See what it's like. But we do need to fix that, it needs to be, and Steve does not wanna do it. He wants a professional to do it, because it's such a hard group to do.
So, uh, this is putting an addition on.
Right.
And then Sally Poet exterior wall, um, he's not sure when they start taking more of that part, how far it's gonna go. So again, the $5,000 is an educated guess.
Yep.
I really don't hate her, so we have a question.
Well, they're all paying for A2, so...
This is A2.
And just so you guys know, those windows we actually went and felt, you can actually put your fingers in the gap in holes around the moldings. So this money for town building energy upgrades is vital. There's really poorly done work there, so that, you can literally feel the wind.
Well, I think there's enough things there to keep Steve busy for-
Yeah, I think getting someone else to do that ramp sounds really good.
Just thinking, their offering, take them up on.
I love it.
So...
Yeah, that's great.
It's not like, you know, they're gonna do crappy job. This guy's a builder and an engineer, so why not let him go at it?
Yeah.
Once they got insurance, so liability's covered.
Yeah, that's great.
And, and as long as, as long as they know what's needed.
And if they want any more jobs, let us know.
Because we have no buildings in town that need A2 now.
Yeah, if they want more jobs, you just let us know.
Try, try for this thing, and then
Yeah.
Maybe you can have them do this other stuff, too.
What is this building?
Yeah. Oh my gosh, if somebody could come in and help us with these windows, literally, really could use help.
Okay, anything else we need to do?
No.
If anyone wants to be there.
We just spent money, we did good.
And we're back again on Wednesday.
Correct.
Same time.
Same, but channels.
Different suite.